Go ahead.
Okay, welcome to the Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025, meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is welcome during the public communication section of each meeting and during any scheduled public hearings. First, we will do introductions, starting to my left and in the room, and then we'll go to online.
My name is Eric Casino, I live in the Lacey UGA, and I serve the commission at large capacity.
Kevin Pussinger, District 5.
Daniel Bonbarker, District 1.
Allison, District 4.
And let's go online, Commissioner Kaiser.
Hello, Sandy Kaiser, I live in and serve District 3.
Commissioner Fishburne.
Hi, Bill Fishburne, I live in and serve District 4.
Commissioner Miller.
Yvonne Miller, Commissioner Miller, District 1, I live in Olympia.
And Commissioner Bartlett.
Uh, Colin Bartlett, I live in Olympia, or I live in Tumwater, and I am Commissioner for District 5, there we go.
Perfect, and I am Joel Hanson, serving District 3. Uh, we have an agenda in front of us, I would make motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the agenda? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. And then, uh, next we have the approval of the meeting minutes from August 20th, 2025. Is there any discussion of meeting minutes?
I'm going to approve the minutes from August 20th, 2025, and accept the audio as the official recording.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, and next on our agenda is public communication. Um, I have one person signed up, and there's two people in the room, so, uh...
So online, so she may raise her hand.
Okay, Charlotte, would you like to give public comment tonight?
I don't actually remember.
And... I will... That's fine, and I'll read my little script here.
Actually, you can hand it to me, and I'll take care of that.
We'll start in the room with public communication, and then if anyone online wishes to address the Planning Commission tonight, uh, please indicate so by choosing the raise hand function on the Zoom call, and we will promote you to a panelist, and I'll give you an opportunity to address the Planning Commission time. And please, uh, state your name and where you live for the record, and then you'll have three minutes, uh, to talk.
Okay, Charlotte Persons, and I live in Olympia, and I'm here to talk about the, one of the things that you're discussing today, which is the Black Lake Quarry. And, uh, one of the things you're considering is whether or not to change the zoning, and from rural residential I-1 to 20, which is sometimes called RRI-120, and to rural resources industrial, which is sometimes called RRI. So, what I'd like to start out talking about is the purposes of each kind of zoning. So, um, RRI-120, I'm not gonna try to read the whole, you know, the whole definition to you, this in the, uh, in the regulations, but basically, it's to protect public health and safety by minimizing development and avoiding incompatible uses in environmentally sensitive and hazardous areas, such as the Black Lake Corridor, the Nisqually Bluff, and parcels completely covered by critical areas. Okay, so it explicitly says that one of the reasons for this is to protect the Black River Corridor, and as you know, this property is on the Black River, and it's very close to, it joins the, um, the refuge for the Black River. On the other hand, rural resources industrial, the purpose is to provide areas where industrial activities and uses that are dependent upon agriculture, forest practices and minerals may be located, and then there are standards to protect the environment and rural character, but not as, as clearly annotated as rural. One major difference is the amount of impervious surface that's allowed, and you, basically, RRI-120 allows 5% or about 10% of the 270 acres that's proposed to be rezoned. And it's about 10 acres altogether. And RRI allows 60% impervious surface, or about 162 acres, but there's a little given there because it's, it's the 60% of the usable area, so it could be slightly less. Nevertheless, there's a big difference between 5% and 60%. And the amount of impervious surface allowed isn't, is important because impervious surface means there's no wildlife habitat in that area. There's also the danger of untreated runoff polluting the Black Creek River Creek or the underground offshore, especially if stormwater systems fail in major storm events. And finally, there are usage differences. For example, RRI does not allow residential housing, and RRI does allow industrial uses with much higher risks of contamination, air, soils, and water, and assumes adverse impacts by listing them for compliance, your quality, noise, and water pollution. So if you look at the two kinds of zoning, there are big differences in what they allow on the land, their impact on the environment, and... And it's really interesting that the regulations for our... Off the 20th. State of the zoning means it is meant explicitly to limit environmental impact on nearby areas, and it explicitly calls out for grassland report. So I would ask you not to allow this zoning reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Persons. And... Would anyone else in the room like to give comment tonight?
Um...
Or do you want to wait and go at the end? Like, we could do that as well?
Um, no, I can do that.
Okay.
I just, I did the, uh, Charlotte, my name's Betsy Norton. Yeah, and I would just like to echo what, um, Charlotte Persons has just summarized, and just indicate to you, I'm submitting also some, uh, some pictures and details on this analysis of the zoning changes. Uh, I went out to the RRI location that we have, that's near Maytown and I-5, and took some pictures just to, uh, emphasize that the zoning development code differences make a big difference in what the results are. I actually, you know, we, you can see the impact of, of the 60% impervious surface, and you can also see, uh, when I, one of the locations has storage containers, uh, you know, those big storage containers stacked three high behind an eight-foot corrugated steel fence. Um, and they also have a hazmat markings on the entrance. Um, and so, these, these risks are real, and I just hope that you take that into consideration. Thank you, I will send this to... Somebody, Claire? Claire?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to give public comment, please? Say your name and where you live for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Bonnie Blessing, I live in Thurston County in the Baby Creek Watership, and if this is about like a rezone, um, I, I would hope that you could, uh, consider protecting federally listed species, um, specifically by maybe conditioning it to avoid gopher areas and to protect, Oregon spotted frogs, wherever they are, they're very rare, and there's only a few locations. And one thing that really gets them are, um, sometimes stormwater systems don't work as planned, or they create bullfrog habitat, and we don't want to create bullfrog habitat near, 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 um, near Oregon spotted frog places, or create ecological traps, and it comes down to stormwater design that sometimes doesn't work 100%. So if you can consider conditioning a permit to avoid, you, uh, you put industrial places where it's already like infrastructure there, whatever that is, uh, avoid cutting down forests, avoid gopher soils, and avoid creating infrastructure that would harm other species nearby. And Oregon spotted frog are state listed, and they, uh, protecting their marshes protects downstream flows and water tables downstream. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, that is everyone in the boardroom tonight. So if anyone online would like to address the Planning Commission tonight, please indicate so by clicking the raise hand function. I see David Toyer has raised, you've raised your hand, you will be promoted to a panelist, and then you'll be able to unmute yourself and address the Planning Commission, Mr. Toyer. Oh, I see him.
You are unmuted, but you do seem a bit quiet. If you could move closer to your microphone.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Terrific, thank you.
Hey, thank you, uh, appreciate your time this evening, David Toyer, Toyer Strategic Advisors. Um, I'm one of the consultants representing Black Lake, uh, in this rezone proposal. Um, one of the speakers talked about the fact that the RRI zone was intended to be, uh, you know, in areas proximate to agricultural forestry and mining locations. Yes.
I'm sorry, uh, could you state your location real quick, and then we'll give you a time to, to start over?
Sure, I'm in Everett, Washington.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I, one of the consultants for Black Lake Quarry, um, and just wanted to point out, one of the speakers did mention earlier that the RRI zone, its intent is to be, uh, able to provide industrial uh, uses that are in concert with agricultural forestry and mining, uh, activities. And again, just wanted to point out, this is an active mining, uh, location. Um, and so, you know, the intent here is to have, uh, related uses that would be associated with those, uh, types of activities of agricultural forestry and mining. Um, I did also want to point out that, um, we had sent some information to staff after your last meeting, and, uh, I talked with my client, and there would be, I, I know one of the, the areas of concern is that there are some critical areas in this overall, uh, piece of property. Um, those are already previously delineated as a part of the mining permitting, uh, and we know, you know, where they're at, and what the buffers are, and all that sort of thing. Uh, but if it would, uh, would be the, the pleasure of the commission, you know, we suggested one route you may want to go is just to, to not rezone the area where those wetlands are known to be. Uh, I did submit a map to staff, um, several weeks back, uh, but, uh, but that, that could be one thing that you might want to consider, but, um, you know, we, we've got an active mining site, um, and, uh, you know, as some of you commissioners that have gone out and looked at the location understand, uh, that the site is not in its, you know, original pristine condition. Um, there is an active mining operation there, and the mining operation will cover a majority of the site over time. Um, this merely gives us opportunities to look at, um, you know, complementary uses and/or uses that would allow us to, to, you know, take, uh, uses that would allow us to create some additional jobs here in Thurston County that also provides some economic, uh, benefit, uh, to the county. So, just want to point those things out. Um, you've previously heard from me a couple of times, and received some of our, our letters and those sorts of things, and just appreciate your time, thank you.
You, Mr. Toyer. Uh, would anybody else online like to give public comment tonight? Okay, I don't see anyone else raising their hand. So, I think we will move on. Uh, the next item on our agenda, which is work session number five on the Black Lake Quarry Land Use and Rezone Amendment. And do we have a presentation?
Yes.
By staff? Terrific.
Oh, everyone can see that? Is everyone making it so?
You should be in. That's... Sorry.
Um, I usually have it. All right, one sec. You show me my notes at the same time. There we go. All right. So, yeah, this is the, the fifth work session on Black Lake Quarry. Uh, the purpose of this presentation is to answer and clarify uh, some questions and discussion that happened last time at our public hearing, uh, and then we'll discuss, uh, whether there'll be a motion to, uh, have a vote on the recommendation for the project. So the first, uh, question that we received last time is in regards to what planning review processes would a proposed industrial development undergo if the property were rezoned? Um, so this is in regards to what the actual permitting process is like for the developments, uh, the specific developments that could happen if the property was, was rezoned. The first step in that process, because we know already this site has, uh, critical areas on it, would be a critical areas review permit or CARP. Uh, since there are critical areas of buffers on the site, any new development would have to go through this environmental review before any other permits were approved. Carp's are required regardless of what other permit types a project needs. So whatever the rest of the steps for their approval are, this is gonna happen at the beginning of that process. It can be concurrent, uh, or it can happen all at once ahead of time. This permit type gives county staff the ability to make sure that no new development would impact critical areas like wetlands, water bodies, and other important habitats, aquifer recharge areas, flood risk areas, or geologically hazard areas like steep slopes. To obtain a CARP, an applicant submits a preliminary site plan, property information sheets, and any required critical areas reports to help county staff determine what impacts may occur to critical areas, what mitigation requirements or other project conditions will be applied, and that the project is consistent with our TCC Title 24, which is our critical areas ordinance.
Eric, can I ask a question real quick? Um, would this process happen if they were expanding the mining operation to another portion of the, of the property and just, you know, move, continuing to do what they're doing now, but, but...
So would there, it, unless there was a change that required, um, like a new special use permit or something like that, they wouldn't have to because it's already been permitted and reviewed, and it's vested to the time and the codes and the processes at that time. Um, but if they wanted to make a dramatic change to the mining operation that would go outside the bounds of what was approved in the special use permit that they have, then yes.
Okay, but if they were just continuing to mine sand and gravel, or whatever it is they're taking out of the ground, but they just expanded to another section of the property, this process wouldn't happen?
Yeah, they're already permitted to keep doing what they're doing, essentially.
Okay, yes, Commissioner.
Uh, under this thing that was handed out to us a few meetings ago, it talks about differences between allowed in R-120 and allowed in RRI, different checkmarks, there's only one overlapping for schools and public facilities. But it specifically says in the second item down, agriculture, forestry, and mining is allowed in R-120. It's blank for allowed in RRI, so...
Yeah, so they wouldn't be able to establish a new mining operation in RRI, but because it's already permitted, um, they would essentially be a legal nonconforming year. Uh, which people also sometimes call being grandfathered in.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying, appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, all right, so then these next two, these are two separate ones. These aren't necessarily, there are two options. Last time, uh, there was a little bit of discussion about the difference between a discretionary review permit and a administrative review. Um, so the first option, this is administrative review. This is for things that are allowed outright in the RRI zone, um, and which is most of those uses that are listed in that zone. Um, so for most things, they're just going to go through administrative review. Uh, if it's out, allowed outright by zoning, uh, the project will still need to be reviewed by county staff to ensure the proposed development, including things like the site and building design, and other features like traffic management and lighting, meet all the applicable code reply, requirements. To get an approved site design, applicants have to submit site layout drawings, building designs, parking layout, screening details, and more, depending on the details of the project. And county staff review all these documents to ensure they meet all the applicable requirements. Uh, this process also might include SEPA review if the project is large enough, and this can allow for a broader scope of review for potential environmental impacts and an additional public comment period. So administrative review doesn't usually have a public comment period, but SEPA does require public comments, uh, depending on the details of that process. Um, no public hearing or hearing examiner review is required for uses that are allowed outright in the code. So this means as long as staff determines the project meets all the applicable code requirement requirements, the project can be approved administratively. Uh, and the SEPA thresholds for types of uses we would see in RRI are 8,000 square feet of commercial space and/or 30 car parking lots, any filling or grading over 500 cubic yards, and agricultural-related buildings over 20,000 square feet. Any of those things would trigger SEPA review. And that could be anything from a determination of nonsignificance to a, a full EIS. But that's all happening in the realm of the county permitting staff. So the other option...
Just to, to visualize, 20,000 square feet? Um... For a... Upmaker? So any kind of warehouse or industrial building or anything?
Just for agricultural.
Yeah.
So, that, that would be, that might not show up really in RRI, um, because you can't, it doesn't allow for like direct agriculture use, but there's some agricultural-related uses, so it's... Maybe possible, uh, but you'd really be more likely looking at that 8,000 square feet, uh, for new commercial or 30 car parking lot.
Thank you.
Uh, do you remember if you put together a public comment matrix on this one?
Uh, there should be, yes.
I'm having a difficult time finding it.
Is it with the July 2nd hearing materials?
Might be, I got a little bit too much here right now.
Yeah, there should be a public comment matrix, um, from the, the hearing, um, I guess.
Is it gonna be one of the slides?
Uh, no, that was, that was from the hearing.
He summarized for us where we stand on public comment, how many total?
Uh, I can do that after the presentation, it's, uh, thought my head might do the fault myself.
Thank you.
Well, I have one thing, Claire was mentioning the SEPA threshold of 20,000. As part of the permit review update to the exemption threshold, we are moving that to 40.
And that's specifically for agricultural buildings?
For barn, loafing shed, farm equipment storage, packing structures.
Uh, so the alternative to the administrative review, which is for outright uses, is a discretionary review, which here we call a special use permit. Uh, and this is for uses that require an additional sort of level of rigor in review, or additional, um, need for discretion in that review. So some uses, which usually have a higher probability of impacting the surrounding areas or require a very intense level of development for that area, are allowed only if the applicant obtains a special use permit. The goal of a special use permit is to provide a higher level of review and apply mitigating conditions to ensure that the property use is compatible with the surrounding areas and with the intent of the zone in which it's located. Like administrative permits, special use permits can also include a SEPA process and do require, and so require the applicant to submit plans, drawings, and other supporting documents to help county staff review the proposal. When county staff finishes project review, they schedule a public hearing with a hearing examiner and provide a staff recommendation, so that's the main difference. After a hearing and a deliberation period, the hearing examiner will either approve or deny the permit. The hearing examiner is a neutral third party that is qualified to review the project while considering all the applicable laws and policies. The hearing examiner can place more robust mitigating conditions on a project than would be typically seen with an administrative review. And the hearing examiner also listens to public testimony and receives public written comments similar to a Planning Commission public hearing.
Uh, just, uh, there were 12 comments?
Oh, thanks.
Um, and it looks like, uh, there were... There was one kind of in favor comment from Norm Tuftrey that said, "You never see common areas get rezoned, always big money areas like a rock quarry that has made millions. If it is applicable this far south, then why not everyone north to Olympia? All for expansion just needs to apply to everyone in the area, not just the rich."
So I'm reading that as well now, and I count nine that say explicitly, "I do not support the Black Lake Quarry Land Use Plan and Rezone Amendment." I count one, that's just as you said, I would support it if there were changes made.
Yeah.
And I count one that says I support it. But I've got 11, and you're saying you've got 12?
Uh, 12 is the number listed on the, the document. There is a comment from, uh, April 8th that simply states their name. It doesn't actually give their response, but they're counted in the...
Thank you.
Any questions on special use, or? Uh, and just to give you an idea too of what goes on in that actual review, this is a list of all the titles of the code that would likely apply. And keep in mind that each one of these titles has anywhere from a couple to like 30 chapters underneath it. Um, so Buildings and Construction mostly just adopts building codes by reference, like the International Building Code, Mechanical Fire, Fuel, Plumbing, all that type of code. Uh, Make Sure Buildings Are Safe, The Public Works, uh, Title, adopts road standards and, uh, drainage design manuals so that, you know, all of those utilities are functional onsite. Title 17, uh, includes the procedures for implementing the State Environmental Policy Act. Uh, it also talks about transportation concurrency management, which is how we try to avoid traffic, forest lands conversion and tree conservation, implementation of a habitat conservation plan, and so that would include protections for both, um, the gophers and the frogs, uh, which I know we've had folks concerned about. Uh, and there are other codes relating to mineral extraction, asphalt production, agricultural uses, stormwater, and not just speeds in that one. Um, Title 18, Plating and Subdivisions, this one would more so apply to if it stayed, uh, in the current zone, because that allows for residential, so it would apply if the site was divided for residential use or commercial use. Any division of the site, uh, would apply Title 18. Title 19 is our shoreline master program, being on the Black River. Um, the site does contain shoreline, so Title 19 and the implementation process for the shoreline master program will apply. Title Zone, Title 20 is where all of the zoning standards come from, so it has universal and zone-specific development standards, and that's where we find things like the allowed uses, the lot standards like impervious area and setbacks, residential density, site design landscaping, and performance standards, things like that. Uh, and it has all the procedures for both the administrative and discretionary permits, so that's kind of how we go through that land use review process is in there. Title 24 is our critical areas, and so that governs all of those, um, wetlands, aquifers, geologic hazard areas, flooding areas, fish and wild type habitat, uh, and all the permitting procedures for protecting those as well. And then Title 25 lets us charge impact fees. So all of those are things that come together to impact the actual project proposals that would come, whether the project stayed as it is and continued to develop that way, or were rezoned. Okay, question two. What can former mine sites look like when they are finished with the reclamation process? The mine reclamation?
Which one, any commissioner asked that question?
Um, I don't remember, we had, um, a couple folks interested in that discussion.
I did.
Yeah, it was Commissioner Bartlett, there was a single picture in the, um, in the packet we'd received from staff, and I believe he asked if there were additional images that we could see of how it could potentially go. Ms. Norton brought in pictures last time, and then again, they're included in our packet this time.
Yeah, it was one of the two main points.
Clarification. Clarification, when you say finished with the reclamation process, can you describe what?
Yeah, so mine, surface mines like this one in general. Through the Department of Natural Resources have a reclamation plan. And that is essentially a plan to return the site to a usable state, so it usually involves regrading and replanning the site to get it back to a point where it's either. Natural area or it's able to be developed and it can move on from being a mine. So finishing with that process would mean there's no mine there anymore and it's something else now. As able to turn into something else and continue being used as land.
Is that a timeline of like one year, ten years, fifty years, a hundred years?
Depending on the mine, I would I would say like ten to thirty or forty years. Cause I know that at the speed they're mining this one, they've got a couple of decades depending on how fast they go. And they might start reclaiming some areas and then do that over time, it's usually in phases. They finish one area, they might reclaim that and continue working on another area, especially because the site's so large. So this is a many year. Takes a long time.
I was just gonna, if I could add, the feedback we heard from the the mine operators is that the. Their intent is not to fully exhaust the mine, it sounds like it would be cost prohibitive to a certain point.
Yeah, and that's, I believe the.
So the reclamation would likely start before. Full exhaustion because it's not economically viable to go under the water table or too close to that critical area.
Yeah, the most complete part, the closest being complete parts are in the north and and then they still have mineable land to the south.
It was my impression that. The mine operators are not required to phase in. Their reclamation, they are only required to do reclamation at the cease of operations or when they're. Shut down, and so even if they've. If it's a hundred acre site and they still got one acre left to go and they don't do it for. Twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, they don't have to do it until they actually either abandon it or they mine the thing out. And so reclamation is the very last thing that happens and it generally does not happen in phases.
Yeah, so mine reclamation is intended to restore non-mining uses to a site once activities have concluded. These uses might include recreation, open space, residential, commercial or industrial uses. Reclamation will be necessary on this site regardless of whether it is rezoned. The decision to rezone the site would only impact what types of uses happen on the reclaimed site. Reclamation can happen in phases, so new uses could be developed even while some portions of the mine are active. And we'll look at a couple examples of reclaimed surface mining sites. The first one is, this is Chambers Bay Golf Course, which used to be Silicon Sand and Gravel Pit. This is in University Place, Washington, the site design actually incorporates old fixtures from when the site was a mine and it hosted the twenty fifteen US Open.
And so in this case, reclamation included just leaving some things in place, not requiring them to. Tear down everything and get rid of it.
Yeah, I mean, they it was, I think it's intentionally incorporated into the site design, so they didn't like. Just the other thing, they worked to kind of like incorporate the history of the site, I think is pretty cool. But yeah.
Many components are largely aesthetic, they're not like leaking or still running or anything like that.
Sure, but they don't look like, you know.
Natural.
Natural.
Well, yeah, what what golf course looking natural?
I'll comment that I was there. It still felt a little bit like a sand mine. Except for it had humongous white tents that could hold thousands of VIPs that were drinking large amounts of alcohol, other than that, it's always. Hopefully bringing lots of tax revenue to the jurisdiction.
There we go. So the next one, this is the former site of Fiatland Sand and Gravel near Tacoma, near the port area. It's now home mostly to open space in new wetland areas after the completion of surface mining activities and actually the. Property owner for this proposal also worked on this project in collaboration with the port. And these are the part of the Hilovis Wetland System that are on this site.
Sorry, that's Tacoma?
Yeah, this is near the port of Tacoma.
Hey Claire, Claire, could you just stay there for a sec? Can you go back now to the other? Yeah, is that like a slag heap there that's been replanted on the left?
Uh, I'm not sure, the site has probably been regraded and replanted. And these are, these are essentially like manmade wetlands that are part of a wetland restoration project.
I gotcha.
So whatever it is, it's. Probably supportive to the wetlands.
I've actually been there and it is pretty nice.
Yeah, very cool. Uh, this is actually one that's in process, which is kind of cool. This is the Lumi Island Heritage Trust is working to reclaim the Lumi Island Quarry that's near Bellingham, Washington. And this will be passive recreational use and open space as a wildlife preserve and park, so this is it, the kind of middle phase. Of transitioning into that reclaimed state. And to get an idea of something that's not, you know, in that kind of open space and recreation, this is Lonesome Pine Regional Business and Technology Park. In Wise, Virginia, it's not a local example, but it is an example of a surface mine that's been reclaimed to accommodate. A variety of recreational, agricultural, commercial and industrial uses. I like this photo because you really can't tell that anything was going on like that before it was totally regraded to being flat. I do think based on the article I was reading about this. It takes a higher level of engineering in the soil to make it stable for buildings, but it can be done.
About the rack.
There there is some parallels in the aerial view. Although I think the rack is a pentagonal knot.
Claire. These are great examples of success stories that may have happened years after the fact. Did you happen to have any? Have you seen any examples of mines that didn't reclaim for a long period of time as Commissioner Casino was describing?
I didn't have anything specific come up while I was looking into this. Yeah, I think. There are a lot of considerations into the timeline it would take, like one of them being how fast they conclude the mining on the site and whether or not they phase in the restoration. And I think something to consider there is that they do have economically an incentive to keep that moving. Especially if they were complete with mining, then the site would essentially be just sitting. As opposed to being able to continue being used, which I think if they're proposing a rezone, I would assume they have ideas for the future of the site.
Just hypothetically, if they. Mind the site to where everything that was economically feasible to take out of the site was taken. But there was still potential. Material that could be mined in the future. They could just let it sit and not do any reclamation for. And say, well, we might mine that in the future, is that?
Well, they would, if if they're not, if they've abandoned the mine. And the way that you check if they've abandoned it or not is every five years they gotta come up with a new mining plan. It would timeout. They could delay it at most five years, definitely.
Okay, got it, okay.
Yeah, they would need to keep coming back for those five year mine review updates. Their special use permit, which is a pretty significant investment of of time and energy to do, and they have to also do ongoing things like groundwater monitoring, so there's. There are disincentives to just letting it sit. Economic and throughout processes.
Mine reclamation plans have to be bonded, so there's a, there's a financial bond tied to it.
Process with DNR.
There would be significant costs to just letting it sit and trying to delay the reclamation, so it's got it, okay, thank you.
Not economically advantageous.
Right, uh, this is all really helpful, do you know by any chance how many mines are in Thurston County or do you measure them by? Square footage or some other metric?
I know we have a spreadsheet, I might have it in my email.
Yeah, maybe. It seems like there's maybe somewhere between fifty and a hundred, but does that sound ballparkish?
I, sorry, Maya Tople jumping in here, I seem to remember somewhere between fifty and sixty and in the acreage of around fifty six hundred. During the mineral lands update.
Thank you.
Fifty to sixty averaging a hundred acres each?
Well, I imagine that a lot of these are big commercial mines and some of them are probably things like family farm mines.
Yeah, this this is definitely buried inside.
And Claire. Back to you.
So that is the end of those, that part of the presentation, I have up here optional motions, we totally have, you know. Room to discuss, but I wanted to have this language available. Yeah.
Commissioner Bombarter and then to you.
I just sharing where I'm at, I'm leaning towards deny. My thought process here is we just spent what eighteen months on the comprehensive plan, right? And a lot of what the comprehensive plan focuses on, like where we want new development, where we want new industry, where we want stuff is in the UGAs. Not out in rural county. And no matter how we frame this, this allows them to do more industrial activity outside of the UGAs, it is. It it is contrary to what we just spent all that time focused on and kind of contrary to what the whole GMA purpose is. It's close to critical areas, it has a little bit of critical areas on it, right? Our job as planning commissioners is to represent the public's opinion and balance that against the county's need. I don't see a county need to rezone this and the public opinion is against it. So I I think that in and of itself is reason to lean deny. Commissioner Pestinger.
Thank you Chair. So I have several questions, the first one's about the comments, public comments, so in addition. To these nine that were written comments that were opposed, one that was maybe with changes. And one that was a yes. There's been quite a few verbal public comments about this, do you have any guess to minute to describe what's? I mean, to me, it seems like it's maybe been eighty percent opposed and twenty percent in favor, does that sound right?
Yeah, I think. Generally, we've had mostly opposed on the verbal comments and. Uh, one or two each time. All of those, a lot of those I would say generally being from. People who come frequently for it, but that's the trend, I would say.
Would you say in total verbal comments, we've gotten ten, twenty, thirty?
Uh, I think we got a little more for the public hearing, but I think we've been getting at least two or three per meeting, so probably about twenty.
My next question is just to clarify again with this. Uh, listed separating out the differences between what's allowed in R one twenty versus allowed in RRI, so the only overlap to schools and public facilities is allowed in both. Here's a list of things that would be allowed in RRI. Services, restaurants, bars, auto and machinery services, et cetera. Farm sales, including wholesale and management services. Veterinary clinics and hospitals, mills and manufacturing of wood products and. Prefabricated buildings, mineral and stone manufacturing and working uses. Administrative, educational and residential accessory uses. Research and testing labs, unclassified uses and railroad rights of way. I know that it's been said that really the the owner here is only looking to basically build like a factory. And probably some kind of shingle factory. But it's been said to me over and over again that if you make this change in zoning. That you have no control, they could do any of these, any of these are possible. And if we turn this sheet over to this sort of. Four different sections of criteria type under each of these two different types of zoning. In the opening one under land capability and environmental characteristics, it specifically says. The RRI requirement, which what we're being asked to change this to. Is capable of supporting industrial development with minimal environmental constraints. No significant adverse effects on surface or groundwater, level and free of critical areas. This is why I've said previously, I don't even know how we have any ability to even consider this request because. We're being told that the law says you can only change this to RRI. If it has no minimal environmental constraints, no significant adverse effects on surface or ground. Water and free of critical areas. This property has all of those concerns and you've stated that to us as well. So I mean, I agree, I think that Commissioner Bombarter about. You know, representing the public and the volume of public comments and the needs of the county and the needs not overriding this. But I also just think. We're in a bad place to prove this when it does not meet the basic requirements listed to us by law. So I would urge a. Not just not a vote to support this change, but a recommendation to to the. Board of Commissioners to not make this change, this rezone.
If I could, I I haven't done many rezones while I've been here, we've been mostly focused on. First in twenty forty five, but one of the ones I do remember is last October, about a year ago, we were talking about Martin Way. Right, the attempt to take an area, make it medium density. Yeah, and I'm reminded of those conversations then where. I reiterated then that like our objective as a planning commission is not to protect the business interests of a single entity, our interests are the public. And the county as a whole, it really does feel like in this situation that an approval, while it may be neutral. In the most generous interpretation, it does not. It doesn't, I don't see how it serves the public interest and it does serve a single business's interest and so again, I I would. Encourage. A vote to deny.
Thanks, I I would just echo some of the comments already made by Commissioners Pestinger and Bombarter. Clearly, there is a lack of public support for this rezoning. I I have a. A significant concern about the removal of public hearing by the that would be incurred by the rezoning. The the minimal environment environmental constraints brought on by an R one zoning is extremely problematic. And as has been stated, I think our job really is to protect the interests of the public and the county. Further, I I don't think it supports our, this commission's goals of, you know, more housing or more land available for housing. It it furthers industrial uses in places where we don't want it as a commissioner. For those reasons, I would oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you, it's been a fun ride. But I've been listening and I do echo especially Commissioner Pestinger's point about the. Multiple uses that this space seems to have if it like, once it goes through its reclamation process. Which. Will be a much longer and much lower one if there's any kind of industrial use that's going on there. I want to be very honest about a lot of the comments that we've gotten and a lot of them are about people whose property values would be increased if this stopped being. A quarry and started being a natural resource area or started being whatever it becomes after a quarry. But why do, why would the property values increase? Like because the land is being, like the land is being used in a more generally valuable to the community way. Like that's one of those areas where the market is saying that this land is more valuable, the land around it is more valuable if this become. If this is allowed to transition out of a mine, once it finishes this current lifespan. And I just see anything that we do to further the industrialization of this is punting the possibility of that farther along and making the options that are available. And fewer.
I I'm feel like I'm going to be on losing into this one and that's perfectly okay, but I think that we do have to consider that. We're not, we're not thinking about rezoning pristine prime untouched land into industrial land. This is already the most. Intensive use that can actually be there. I the only thing that would probably be more intensive if we were burying nuclear waste. So this land has already been stripped down, there's not a bit of soil left on it or anything else. So I think that any opportunity to. Redevelop this land under current development regulations today, today's development regulations are certainly more stringent. And more protective of the environment than the development regulations that that initial mine permit was issued under. I think would be nothing but a benefit. I do also think that. We often say things along the lines of we need food resiliency, we need to have our food come from here locally. But then we're like, well, let's truck in our gravel. That doesn't make a click of sense to me, full less vehicle miles travel to get gravel, because it's not. That doesn't make a, like a sense to me. Full less vehicle miles travel to get gravel, because it's not like all of a sudden we're not going to need gravel. We're still going to need gravel. We're still going to need sand. It's still going to be bought. And I would prefer not to have those trucks drive any farther than they have to. And to the point of is somebody going to get rich off this deal? I understand that feeling, but I don't, it's not an important one to me because I really want to see what's best for the land. If somebody makes money off of it, that's great. If nobody makes money off it, that's great too. But, um, I think that, I think that if we did, uh, you could do an analysis that said that the environmental benefit of actually rezoning this and redeveloping it under current regulations might actually be an improvement. I'm sure that's debatable. I'm sure it's very debatable, but I don't think that it is, uh, settled.
I can't see all the commissioners online, so if.
Mr. Fishburne has their hand up.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Kaiser had her hand, her hand before me.
Thanks, Bill. Appreciate that. Um, the, the concern I have and the reason I would vote for option two is that there have been decades of investment at the federal, state and local level in the conservation values of this area. Cause it is a really remarkable space. And as we saw in Claire's pictures, there is a chance for some, some middle recovery, um, from a conservation perspective. If, um, area is allowed to return. I think the chances of that happening are much better if we deny this rezone and land use amendment request. And for that reason, among many, many others that folks have, um, spoken to, I would be voting against this.
Sure, Fishburne.
Yeah, uh, just some of the comments were made tonight reminded me of comments that had been made in the past. And one of those was something about we've done the worst that we can to this land, so why not continue doing, uh, as bad or, or even worse in the future? And to me, I just want to raise the, you know, the idea that that's a little bit like a double nuclear option. Like we already bombed a city once with a nuclear weapon, so why not bomb it again? Uh, I just, I, I don't feel like that is a valid argument to, um, to support option one.
Oh, do you want to respond?
I, I would love to respond to that. I, I think in that analogy would be better to say after the first bomb goes off, we could let it sit there and fester, or we could go in and clean it up and turn it into something better again. Well, and that's what the redevelopment would do.
Mr. Bumberger.
Us having heard at least one, possibly two takes from nearly every person here, I would move to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners deny the rezone and land use amendment request.
Seconded. Discussion?
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll pipe up. Um, I think, well, I guess my first question is, do we know when this mine is permitted?
Uh, I think this iteration of it goes back to ninety, nineteen ninety-seven, but I've been mining, I could be on the site for quite some time, I think since the eighties.
So, um, one thing to think about is critical areas. Cause this mine is regulated by nineteen ninety, critical areas. Any new development, if we were, well, either way, but any new development's going to be run by the, well, probably whatever our next critical areas is, because I don't think it's going to happen that quick, but. So it's going, it's going to have more protection in its next phase, no matter what. Um, I would also say that I think we need industrial land in Thurston County, especially industrial land to support natural resources, which we have virtually none of. And I can tell you, I don't, I don't know what there is for wood stuff, but for agriculture. I go to Lewis County or Pierce County to buy feed. I go to Lewis County to buy seed and fertilizer and chemicals for spraying. I mean, equipment, I actually depend parts. I go to Lewis County mostly, but I go all over to buy actual equipment because if you drive around Thurston County, there is not a place that you can buy the equipment that I need. I mean, the closest is Kipper's and their, their biggest tractor that they have on the lot right now is almost as big as the smallest tractor I use. So I mean, that, that's my concern is that we don't have probably for, I mean, I think mining, if you need something, you've got to mine, you can probably build there. Forestry, I don't think there's a lot in Thurston County. I know in agriculture, there's virtually nothing. So and I do know that we took in, what was it, twenty twelve to fourteen, took several hundred acres of RRI and zoned it one to twenty. And I mean, I think that was a really bad decision. But, uh, I guess the last thing I'll say is we, we've heard the list of things that you can do, but I believe that we heard from staff that this is in a location where those things that aren't resource related aren't going to be done. Because there's specific standards you have to meet to do certain things. And if you don't meet those standards, then you can only do the resource related industries.
All right, I'll, I'll just chime in, um, that I've talked to a number of people about this and I, I think I've, I've what I think rezoning this would do would be provide an incentive to the landowner to develop a project that would put them at, at, you know, in line with the current regulations. And that, that if it's only with a financial incentive of the ability to do something different that I think that they would bring the, the, um, the land up to the current regulations and anything that they propose to do would have to go through all these, uh, hoops and would have to comply with all the current regulations as they are. So I'll be voting against the motion. Yeah, I, I think that this is one way that, you know, they can keep mining this and keep it as is for decades. Or through this zoning change, we could provide a financial incentive for them to do something that is less damaging. And, uh, so that, that, you know, that's my thinking. And I would agree that there is not enough industrial land in, in, uh, Thurston County to meet our, our, projected growth, um, particularly resource industrial land. And so we're going to have to figure out where things go or a lot of things are going to be coming from somewhere else. Um, and that, that is a concern as well. So, um, yes, Commissioner Pestinger.
Thank you Chair. Uh, I've I've heard a lot of the verbal comments and a lot of the folks that have made verbal public comments, uh, tell me they have said that they live on the Black River, um, further downstream generally. Um, and what I've heard from them in addition to what they said publicly was that there is quite a bit of activity going on, uh, unpermitted, uh, development stuff. Uh, unpermitted clear cutting of, of brush along the riverbanks, unpermitted building of event centers that literally go over the river, like a deck over the river. Um, unpermitted other activities of development along that river. And there's some a, a lack of confidence by the public that I talked to that, uh, you know, that they feel like a lot of developers have learned it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission and just go ahead and do the, the finer, the risk is fairly small. The process of trying to get permits and everything is, is too much, too high of a bar. And that they've seen, you know, a lot of negative impact to, uh, the Black River all along its route and the corridor that's supposed to be specifically carved out for protection. Um, I also, so I think that us voting to deny the rezone or recommending to the board to deny the rezone would give at the very least a, a strong message to the public that, hey, we're we're trying to rein it in, we're trying to be more careful with what's going to happen, especially in environmentally sensitive areas. And while I did not physically visit the mine itself, I did visit the area immediately surrounding it, uh, for quite a while, uh, quite a few hours driving around. And it, it is very pristine. It's been described already to us on multiple occasions as having critical areas, multiple endangered species, either right on the property or right nearby. Critical aquifer recharge, water in all different ways being impacted. Uh, everything from bears living in the area to, uh, all sorts of fish. Um, and I, I might even think, yeah, maybe we will need some more industrial land in the county, but I sure as heck would not say let's build it in one of the most pristine spots, even if the mine itself is not pristine, everything surrounding it is. And, uh, or the vast majority of what surrounds it is, and I would not recommend building industrial warehouses or any other form of industrial activity in an area that environmentally pristine. And so I really, uh, urge a nay vote or a vote to, uh, deny the rezone request.
I just want to make.
Mr. Miller has her hand up.
I just real quick clarifying, we're talking about a landowner that is not building anything unpermitted, right?
Well, I'm not saying this landowner.
Okay.
No.
And we're talking about a landowner that is going through the appropriate process to ask for a rezone. So just making the distinction that you're not talking about this specific situation in this rezone application, you're talking about other people that happened to maybe be nearby.
Exactly.
Okay, clear. Commissioner Bumberger.
Commissioner Miller has had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Miller is first.
Commissioner Miller, I didn't see you there.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, um, I am also against this. Um, I'm newish to the commission. Um, however, I have heard a lot about, um, how hard you guys have been working, um, in environment. And this would be a huge detriment to the environment. And also, um, I think it's very important to listen to the, um, the public and majority of the public is completely against this. So I'm going to have to also say that I am against this.
Or I, I'll keep my comments quicks. I don't think we're, anyone's moving where they're at on this. It is not a mystery what will be here. It is not a hypothetical of what industry will go there. We've already heard. They want to build things to support their existing extractive things. Ultimately, that prolongs the economic viability of the mine, which prolongs the amount of time mining happens. So again, I think we are aware that it is not good land right now. It's not in good shape. I don't think anyone's pretending that the mine itself is great, but allowing more non-permeable surface and buildings to pop up there because around them, they might be remediated at the time. Ultimately just prolongs it and leaves a bunch of concrete slabs and buildings there when they're done. And I, that's not what I want there. And I don't think that's what the public wants there. So I would encourage a roll call for a vote.
I'm ready.
Any other hands? Anyone have a final comment? Okay, so let's.
We're on motion, option one.
Option two.
Option two. I motioned to deny.
Okay, and it was seconded by Commissioner Bartlett. And, uh, yeah, let's take the roll.
Commissioner Casino?
Nay.
Commissioner Pestinger?
Aye.
Chair Hanson?
Nay.
Vice Chair Bumberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartlett?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaiser?
Aye.
Commissioner Fishburne?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Uh, would, uh, anyone scared of?
No, I'm not interested in writing a minority report.
That was going to be my next question. So no, no interest in minority report?
Let's, Commissioner Nelson wants to write one.
When do you need it, Brian? You have plans to go back to the board in the near future?
Um, this is going to, this will go to the board with the Martin Way rezone you all looked at last year. Um, it's board season, so we're having to strategically plan what goes to the board when. Um, we've been waiting since we're doing them together. We can't move forward on Martin Way until this, but, uh, e-brief materials should be getting sent next week when Ashley's back. So I feel like if you were to get it by the next planning commission, that would still suffice.
Oh, I'll make an effort. If you don't get something from me, then just assume I didn't have time.
I appreciate that you tried.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Claire.
Yeah, thank you, Claire. We work on that.
Are there any specific findings that the majority would want to put in the recommendation letter that goes to the board?
I have notes from the conversations that is in.
I think, I think the overarching theme is that we're representing the opinion of the public here, which is overwhelmingly you guys not favoring this.
I would like this particular part of the
Yeah.
Information.
Okay, yeah, I have that. Um, so yeah, the, the main points I have for, for this conversation for the reasoning for the motion would be the public comments, the environmental concerns, the concerns about the specific intensive, the zoning and, and that requirement language that's from the comprehensive plan, the desire to keep intensive, um, development in the UGAs rather than in the rural county. Uh, those, those are kind of the main points I have.
Um, I would just, uh, there, there has also been a frequent, uh, suggestion that leaving it as it is increases the number of options for what the land can become. It's been something that we.
But the number of remediation options, you mean?
Number of, of remediation options or options post remediation.
Yeah, and I have that desire to utilize that restoration.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next on our agenda is work session number forty-one on Thurston twenty forty-five. Follow-up and recommendations.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Maya Tibo, Senior Planner with Thurston County Community Planning, joined tonight by Anna Rodriguez. Um, tonight is really time for you as a planning commission to discuss if and uh, what findings you would like us to include in the final recommendation letter. Um, I would also like to provide a recap and update on the Growth Management Hearings Board case on the ag appeal. So I would just ask that we reserve, uh, twenty or fifteen minutes for me to go through that information. So it's on the formal record. So with that said, I will kick it into findings. I think we have until eight thirty-ish on the agenda. So if we can get through findings by eight ten, that'll give me enough time to move through the Growth Management's Hearing Board information. So, um, yeah, I'll open it up for discussion. We, we have general findings in our letter about the process. Um, but if there are any specific findings that you would like us to include, this is a time to let us know.
Yes, sir. Uh, I don't know if we put this into the actual comprehensive plan, but it struck me. I was thinking about it this week that you know, we put a, a lot of emphasis and focus on climate and environmental concerns and issues and chapters and even reordering the chapters. And I apologize for extra work that that's caused, but I do think it's important to signify, um, and I am not of the school that says all these chapters are created equal and all of these priorities are the same. I absolutely do not think they are. And, uh, and intended it all along to be number one chapters, number two chapters as some of the most important things. And so was it mentioned in the comprehensive plan that we are in a environmental crisis that has been declared by the Board of County Commissioners?
I don't believe that specific language is in there.
I would ask that that be included as a finding and that that's part of the reason that that's such a high priority.
Commissioner Bumberger.
I have one small finding. Um, last meeting, uh, on the five percent rural growth, we were presented two options, which I will stand by. Felt like a false choice to pick between only carrot or only stick in that situation. Um, I do want to clarify four findings that I definitely have a preference for carrots if they'll work. But I don't think we should, uh, pursue them at the exclusion. But I don't think we should uh pursue them at the exclusion of sticks if we need them, if that makes sense. So I definitely want to encourage staff and the planning commission and uh to. To focus on where they can leverage innovation and mitigate impacts and do new and cool things. To help us achieve that growth without necessarily just pursuing blanket downzoning. I don't think anyone will thinks blanket downzoning is necessarily the preferred state, but I feel like it needs to be there as a backstop if we don't. Hit our goals.
How would you succinctly bullet point one line or that?
A preference for incentives and innovation. Um with the. Exigency that uh. That's that uh. That tools like downzoning could. Could impose pressure or it, I I'm sorry, I'm. But, provide, there we go. It's probably not the most eloquent way of stating that, I have a severely ranging conversation. You should work carrots and sticks in there somehow. Carrots and sticks, like I I like carrots, but honestly, like we're talking about. Are the future viability of the county in a very real and meaningful way? And the preferences of. Public that have talked to us, and so we have a responsibility to uphold that. And that means that if we can't, you know, noodle and innovate and. Structure and parrot our way out of it, then we need to have that um that second. Set of options.
I have some language um that I could potentially suggest for that. The planning commission favors incentive-based and innovative approaches when feasible, while also acknowledging the urgency of employing. Regulatory tools where necessary to ensure accountability and progress.
Nice.
That work?
Change the word urgency to exigency.
That's a fun, I I don't know where that came from for the record, I haven't, like I've spoken that word in like twenty years.
Would you like that to be specific to? Um I I'm recalling that motion was specific to uh the five percent. Would you like it to be specific to that, or is it just a general statement?
I I my, my discussion was towards pursuing that five percent goal.
But it probably applies broadly.
Yeah, it applies.
It it applies broadly, but I mean, I feel like if they read it as a finding for the five percent, they understand where our mindset is and. They can infer a broader context without us accidentally. Reframing other things where we may have put more stringent uh feedback in there, if that makes sense. Exigency, the quality or state of being exigent, a quality or state affairs that makes urgent demands, I had to look it up.
Hold on, anyone else first, but then I'll go.
I don't see any other hands, so Commissioner Pestinger.
So another finding for me, uh was the second topic I cared the second most about in all of this, which was housing. And uh it there. I guess I should have known better, but it was surprising to me that, you know, we have these. We're told by the legislature and by state law. That we must uh make plans for housing at all income levels. And we're shown numbers that say, well, you got pretty good volume in. Above A M I uh income levels. Um you might have almost enough for at A M I. Um but you need more probably, and you definitely need more at eighty percent. And you need way more at fifty and way more at thirty or zero. Um but the only tools we have at our disposal is to encourage. Uh massively dense housing, high-res apartment complexes, basically a little bit for some mobile home parks. A little bit for some ADUs, unknown uh whether those could become affordable in any of those levels, eighty, fifty, thirty. Uh but. Being told we must. Provide. Zoning for housing at all income levels. And then being told the only thing you can possibly do is support high-density and mobile home parks. To get to anything below A M I. Uh I think is a finding worth the board knowing about that. That's what the state's asking for, but it's impossible to make it happen. All the best we can do is make it a remote possibility, and personally, I don't think creating a bunch of high-rise apartments. And turning a county into a vastly increasing renter pool instead of a ownership pool. I don't think that's good for us or the county or the residents.
Thank you backing off of that. It seems to me that the, when we were talking about ADUs, we were talking about uh cluster housing, we were talking about a lot of these options. It really did seem like we were just trying to find uh basically any. Incentive or any um any set of uh of of conditions that would allow us to increase. Lower income housing specifically, um and that we wanted uh. We wanted more options than we had, we tried to invent as many as we could, and we would love it if the, if we could see similar. Um imagination going forward um to try to find a a mix of public and market options. Um we would like more public options than we've been given.
Commissioners online have. Comments or findings, okay?
I think uh this is for the most part been a largely consensus-driven process. There have not been a large number of things where the votes have been close. And I think that's a credit to the work we've done at building consensus and speaking our minds and listening honestly to the people here. And I think that that's worth including, that this is largely not a polarizing document. This wasn't a bunch of things that skimmed by by one vote, um so I I think that's worth noting. At least for the B O C C's consideration.
Second that as a finding.
I have a question for uh Commissioners Passenger and Miller. Um we've had a week now to look at the uh comp plan um and spend a little bit more time with it. I know that we were feeling very rushed and that's why we voted the way that we did um at the end of last uh meeting. I was wondering where uh you both stand now, having had more time with it, how you would vote if that vote was happening today?
I would still vote the same. Still wish we had more time, I still wish the public had more ability to give input on the final product.
They do at the board stage.
I've heard that a thousand times, but I still, I still stand by what I wish, I still stand by what I wish.
Um, may I speak?
Yes, of course.
Okay, um I completely agree with um Mister Passenger. I think that there still needs to be more time, so I stand by my vote as well.
And for the record, uh since I brought the question up. Given what we have so far, um if we were voting, i- if I was, if I was going to vote today, I would probably have voted. Uh in favor of the comp plan as it exists with the note of protest that I wish we had a. A, we had, I wish we'd had the engagement that we had after the climate section throughout the whole process. And that we'd had a li- a little bit longer to to get people engaged, um which. I'm not putting on the county, or I'm not putting on on any of the staff here, I think that was as much our own responsibility as as community members to bring people in as anything.
You'll see them during building and development code.
Oh yeah.
And C A O.
Oh yeah.
Oh, um I just wanted to mention, health was out of scope for us, it it was not, and there were a lot of situations where. There were nexuses with the topics that that broached health, and we wanted to dig in and couldn't. So I I like, it's not really a finding so much as encouragement that the next time this comes up, we really need to revisit health. Like, uh it it can't continue to be. The the neglected part of this plan that just gets copied and pasted over each time. It it has nexuses with homelessness, it has nexuses with uh drug use and rehabilitation, with housing, with environment. It it is, yeah, there, and land use, it it's too connected to the other parts for us to continue to ignore it. And I I know that's not a staff decision that we, or that was a available uh resources thing. But I I don't think we can continue to ignore that.
Well, I'll just say that from my point of view that if somebody challenges this, we will be going over health.
I guess to follow that up, I would actually, and I was wondering if my, how how everyone else feels about this, make a recommendation. That they pursue the health chapter sooner than would otherwise happen, like soon, like that that they, they accelerate the process.
Are you talking about docketing a rewrite of the health chapter before the?
Yes.
The required, the required window?
Yeah.
I would second that motion.
I would as well. Any discussions? The motion on the table, uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
I'll abstain from that.
Think the eyes have it, that the uh.
We should probably check with the the folks who are muted online.
Yeah, did.
About I?
Aye.
There you go.
Aye.
One verbal.
Did you capture that, Anna? Okay, um. Any other discussion of findings we might include? Is the process that we'll see a draft of this before?
Oh, it's going to the board now.
Okay, so just the finding language, I mean, no, 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 uh we have this draft.
I'm about to try to give you the sign.
Okay. Got it.
What you all said.
Got it, we'll take a moment to read through it.
You're good, I'm here, you got G M H P talks about.
All right, Maya, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Great, and so Anna will print that and add the additional motion and um we'll have it to. The chair to read tonight and then sign, um the board will be getting a package recommendation hopefully tomorrow. Or Friday, depending on how Word wants to work for me this week. So moving on, uh growth management hearing board case recap, so uh this just is just to have something on the record. It was a meeting or two ago where Derek gave a brief update on this. Um so some of you may remember, we had the community um driven review of agriculture policies and programs. That started, oh gosh, in twenty twenty-one, quite a while ago. And uh that project was under review for a long time, the planning commission saw that in uh twenty twenty-three. And reviewed that quite thoroughly over several work sessions, and the board took a final action in December of twenty twenty-four. And then we were appealed on that, so this is to recap the outcome of that appeal and uh next steps for the county moving forward. So just to summarize, um the community-driven review of agricultural policies and programs was a project that was docketed. In twenty twenty, it was in response mostly to a lot of community desire to update and take a look at that. Land use designation for agriculture and how we zone for long-term agriculture in the county. And also in response to some comments from Futurewise saying that we weren't using the most up-to-date soils list. And so we docketed that, uh we did a holistic review, there were several pieces of that project, there were some code updates. There were some incentive pro- program updates to open space and conservation futures. And then there was the zoning update for uh long-term agriculture, which lives in the comprehensive plan. And the planning commission reviewed that in twenty twenty-three, uh we held quite a few work sessions, I think there were five or six work sessions with the planning commission. And a public hearing. And uh the planning commission did produce a recommendation on that, and then uh we. Got a new soils list in late twenty twenty-four, um it turned out that our G I S analyst was on maternity leave, so we had to pause the project. Um sorry, late twenty twenty-three, uh our G I S analyst was out, and so that restarted in twenty twenty-four once she was back in. And the board made a final adoption late last year. Um that that final adoption, what the board ultimately landed on was we updated the soils list. Some of the criteria in the comp plan were changed, uh just for example, the big one is instead of having a fifty percent requirement. It went to seventy-five percent, soils must be on the property, and the result of adding those new soils were that. No new lands were actually zoned after we did the whole G I S analysis. Um so we were appealed on that adoption in early of twenty twenty-five. And Futurewise, um they, they alleged a couple of points, but their primary allegations. Were around our soils list and not including certain prime farmland soils. And also that we must consider farmlands of statewide importance. Uh so where the growth management hearings board landed with that was that uh the county prevailed on all the points. In the appeal with the exception of we must consider the farmlands of statewide importance. Um so the planning commission actually already did that work and we had a lot of that structure there. We just did not uh tie it up very neatly in the brief that went uh to to the case. So a lot of it is just recap and making sure we display that correctly in our new comp plan. So um just to recap, the planning commission's recommendation from twenty twenty-three. Uh we, we focused on the prime soils and uh the prime soil recommendation was to exclude the less capable soils. Based on land capability classification, uh so there was a long list and a ranking. We went through all of that and discussed what soils could or couldn't be used for, and ultimately. A majority of the planning commission, not unanimous vote, landed on excluding soils of a certain capability and below. And so the way farmlands of statewide importance fits into all of that is that uh the planning commission did actually review those soils. We brought that after the public hearing, we received a few public comments on those types of soils, asking us to consider them. And uh Planning Commission, we brought that to that hearing, ultimately, all of those soils are. Less capable than even the prime soils that were ultimately excluded by the planning commission. So at that time, the discussion with the planning commission was, it doesn't make sense to include these in this designation. As long-term commercial agriculture, however, they might still be worth protecting. And so we fit that into the periodic update, and the intent was to look at other innovative zo- zoning tools. So that was a finding in the actual recommendation letter from the planning commission in twenty twenty-three. Fast forward to now, so here we are in our periodic update and we were planning on looking at a new agriculture zone overlay. Uh the challenge to actually pursuing that overlay as part of the periodic update is we just couldn't do it while we were under appeal. So we have all the framework there, it is existing in the comp plan, there's a policy within chapter three. That states that we will look at a new ag zone overlay. Um you know, the details of what that looks like would be determined through a full legislative process and review with the planning commission. But uh it's in there, and then in our implementation plan appendix, it's a short-term item, next one to five years, we plan to address this. And it would basically be a new docket item to consider a ag zone overlay. Uh so farmlands of statewide importance is just one piece of that, that's um where those will mostly fit in. But it could also look at smaller parcels of land, maybe down to five acres that have. Prime soils that just aren't included in the designation initially, because they're not large enough. Um or they're not contiguous to other pieces of land, so uh we do intend to still review that. Um it would come back as a new docket item before the board in the next short-term timeframe. And that is the plan on how we will be addressing uh farmlands of statewide importance, but also other. Prime soils that the planning commission either didn't include or weren't included just by um size or other criteria. That they didn't meet in the comp plan. So I'll pause there and I'll ask if there are any questions on how we're moving forward with this.
Commissioner Bartlett?
Uh actually, I'm I'm taking this forward, but uh Commissioner Casino, I note that you are the, you signed off on this. Um and I was wondering if there's anything that's missing from what was described?
No, in fact, she reminded me things I'd already forgotten.
Great.
Uh thank you for covering that, did uh.
Uh, thank you for covering that, did uh? I've become curious and about the topic of soil and I've talked to some folks here. Uh, we've made public comment many times and and they say about our farms and our soil. Uh, there are spots in the county where we have some of the best soil. And there are a lot of spots where we don't have great soil. Um, and so the difference between really good soil and not great soil is pretty meaningful. Um, interestingly enough, in parallel, I'm reading this book called Contested Boundaries by David Jepson about the history of the Pacific Northwest. It's a great book, I totally recommend it. Um, and they talk about the initial Oregon Trail, a lot of folks coming out here and trying to set up farming and the giving away of homesteading, hundred and sixty acres and more and farm it for five years or seven years, depending on the state you're in. Oregon had different laws, Washington had different laws, the US had different laws at different times. Um, but you know, a lot of people came out here to farm and that followed a lot of people coming out here to trap and fur, get fur. And it was interesting because so, you know, everyone hears about the Oregon Trail and going to Oregon, but it really is fairly significant what high proportion of those folks in eighteen forty, eighteen fifties uh went to Oregon, not to Washington. Uh, they went to the specifically the Willamette Valley, which is incredibly high soil quality. Um, thanks to the Ice Age floods and other things, it's been dumped an enormous amount of historical silt and whatnot. Uh, that provides incredibly high quality farmland for a lot of different things. And we know from our own local history here with folks like uh the gentleman who named Pualup and who brought hops to great importance in this area, Ezra Meeker. Um, that both tried farming here, up up, they came came to the Willamette Valley and then many of them. Uh strangely enough, Portland wasn't in existence and Astoria was expected to be the big city, uh Astoria, Oregon. But a lot of folks came up, some started, Ezra Meeker started farming in Vancouver initially or somewhere in Clark County, just across the border of of the river. Um, and folks started moving up uh towards uh you know Olympia, Chehalis, Centralia, and then all the way Tacoma, Seattle, et cetera. Um, but what I read that was interesting in this history book about our soil is that even at that time, eighteen forty, eighteen fifty, a lot of folks were trying to grow crops in Thurston County. And many found the soil not ideal for crops they tried to grow. And many turned to ranching, uh uh there was quite, it it was from what I read, the land was fairly good quality, not for all types of ranching. Uh, I don't think sheep did particularly great, but uh cattle did pretty well, the land was pretty good for growing uh grass uh that was in in types of feed that you need to graze cattle on. And so that was a pretty heavy distinction in the types of local farming that was done here. And so with all this said, uh you know, I I don't, I think this is silly that that lawsuits had to force us to kind of try and do things a little bit differently, I would ask staff to understand better. What do we think was the real goal futurewise is trying to accomplish, I'm sure. It's something along the lines of let's preserve the best farmland we have possible. Uh, and I would think that's a goal of all of us, I think we all would carry that goal. So uh if it's different, I'd love to know that. Um, if there's things we can do to encourage both saving the high quality soil farmland that we do have, retaining it as much as possible. I'm very curious about the topic of regenerative farming and farmers that think that they can improve soil or bring soil back to a higher quality. Um, I don't know if there's any evidence of that here in Thurston County, I know some folks have tried, I think Tullman has tried itself in some of this area. Um, I'm curious what we know, anything about the success rate, anything we could do to encourage more of that in Thurston County, anything that takes maybe core soil types but improves it. Uh, or marginal or medium good soil types and gets it up to a good level. Do we have any evidence of that, is there anything we can do to encourage that?
Commissioner Bartlett? You touched on uh the soil reclamation or soil remediation was just gonna be one part of regeneration there. Uh, that was going to be part of what I was gonna bring up, uh I know that that's um that's something that uh uh the reason that Alberta had such good farmland up until recently, um such good soil land that was not facing the decline that the rest of Canada was, is they had a uh regenerative agriculture policy uh regarding soil bu soil building. Um, what's notable about that to me is that the kind of land they were talking about is the kind of sort of high alkal alkaline soil that we ended up having out here. Um, they were also dealing with a prairie that largely existed because of the First Nations that were there, that they then harvested all the soil out of. Uh, but that second uh if that second point was kind of what I most wanted to focus on, which is that we do have crops that grow very well in our soil, that were that evolved to grow very well in our soil. And I'm interesting interested what the intersection is with uh that sort of those those indigenous crops that do do well here. Um, and uh our soil recommendations and our cell designations, if there aren't um areas that would have greater uh utility if they were being used for uh non traditional crops. Um, that would that would be considered higher valuable agriculture if they were being used agriculturally as they traditionally were.
Just just to kind of inform a little bit about some of the decisions we made back in twenty twenty three on these issues and I don't know how this figures in with what futurewise is looking for. But it it wasn't whether or not we were gonna protect the prime soils, we were already doing that. When we were going down our list of soils of what we were going to put in this program, what we weren't, it wasn't the best or the second best or the third best. It was some of the fourth best, and there is issues along the lines of this is basically a rock, it's not soil. This is basically underwater, we're not farming it. This basically has no water and we can't pipe any eggs, we don't have a water, right? Those were the kind of issues that we're coming up again, so it wasn't that this is a great piece of dirt, but we want to build houses. It's was, this is not a great piece of dirt, it was the stuff that was marginal at best. We even had discussions on, do we call this farmland because we can ranch it instead of grow food in it? So I I'd like to think that we had a lot of those things that we took into consideration, and I don't know exactly what futurewise is trying to get at here with their suit.
Okay, I think we've exhausted the comments on that one.
Thank you.
Back to you, Maya.
Um, yeah, so I I mean FSI is just to summarize what you all said and answer a couple of questions. We can certainly look into those things when we come back with a full docket project to do a new ag zone. Um, but farmlands of statewide importance, there there's about fifty in Thurston County and uh over forty of those, I think it's like forty one or forty four are just unsuitable for commercial agriculture, they're downright hazardous to farm, they're high erosion, high slopes. Um, they cut into machine operability and they're just not ideal. And of the ones that are even somewhat okay, they're again steeper slopes and mostly fall on smaller lands, so they don't meet other criteria typically. So um just to summarize, uh as as next steps for us, we are folding this into part of the comp plan periodic update because we have to um comply. Our compliance order is due by February of next year, so uh we will be recapping the planning commission's recommendation from twenty twenty three in the technical appendix. And there will be a little blurb on farmlands of statewide importance in that appendix. Uh, that'll go through the board and part of the board's public hearing. And then um that will go through uh to the compliance order early next year, what provided this gets adopted on time, so. Um, that's just to summarize those next steps, and that's it for me on this. Any final questions?
Oh, Commissioner Missinger.
I should send a funny comment about being on the woodland trail recently and seeing what's being farmed on the trail. Uh, is anyone familiar with the roney berries?
Yeah.
Also go by choke cherry, choke berry name. Uh, I I was going down the trail, which is right by where I live the other day, and I mean, I see a ton of these, if if somebody wanted to, I don't know what's the quality of the soil right next to a paved path. But uh these things are growing, like if someone wanted to harvest them, there's approximately ten zillion uh pounds of roney berries available along that trail.
They're super high in antioxidants.
Yeah, this guy was out there picking them and had a bicycle and filling his basket with all these berries and I asked him, I actually mistakenly thought they were elderberries. And he said, no, they're roney berries and he, they don't taste very good, but they're really healthy.
Yeah.
Have you ever eaten a cranberry unsweetened and unprocessed, they're atrocious.
Astringent is the word the internet uses, but.
There's a company in Chehalis that um processes and dries them and adds them in small amounts to some of their nutritional supplements and protein powders. Um, is the.
Yeah. I think the the aspect of that that I would find really relevant for us is that we've talked a lot about uh food sovereignty and uh uh food and food resilience, and we've talked a lot about croplands in the way that they they are relevant to that. Um, but there's a lot of of land that is not traditional cropland that does provide a lot of nutrition, it does provide a lot of sustenance, this is what most of urban farming does. And farming does not provide the calories that people need. Urban farming or or backyard farming provides the the nutrition that people would not get otherwise. That's usually what's found in in like in how that improves uh food sovereignty. And so that's something to consider when we're talking about, uh you know, planning for our own future is that things like this do increase the food utility of a community, even though they're not increasing the overall farmland. There are other routes that we might want to look at in the future.
The reason I even raised it was your comment about what are things that grow here that have adapted to this particular soil types and climate and whatnot, and obviously it does well here, are you know, you hear historically that the the folks that lived here ate a high amount of, you know, hunter gathering, but mostly berries and Amazon whatnot, so obviously there's some things here that do grow well that maybe become a part of an evolving diet for some of us.
If you're willing to perish a sloped um erosion heavy wet territory like you wouldn't typically grow things, we have the right climate for wild rice here. It's not, it's not a bulk agricultural item, it's a special agricultural item, but you could absolutely do that productively here if you have that initiative for it.
You should go up and down the road and harvest wild carrot.
Yeah. It's true. There's a, there's a, there's a market for a lot of that stuff.
I I say it with some measure of laugh about it, but some measure of seriousness, I I just learned a lot about Hawaii and Hawaii for many centuries was completely food sufficient. They now import ninety to ninety two percent of their food. Um, they have lost the ability in many areas because sugar plantations and pineapple plantations and things bulk massive production monocrops had took over for a hundred years. Uh, and now they're trying to bring back like, how could we, why are we importing bananas from Mexico and Ecuador? When we could easily grow our bananas in Hawaii, and so their own local both indigenous and people who live there locally for for a while uh are trying to bring back uh foods that they can grow themselves easily.
Commissioner Bartlett? Uh, we're sort of entering a little bit of a a chatty uh phase of this, which I'm totally fine with. Uh, we definitely have the time for it right now, um because we got through other things a little bit faster, uh but uh again, to tie that back into our our uh our our plans, one of the main kinds of, so the part of Hawaii that you're talking that 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 is generally referenced here is the one part of the state that has about there, the one, the one area of another state that has almost the same rain amount of rainfall that we do. Like, it's the only other rainiest spot in the United States um than uh than the Saylor Sea. And uh the primary crop they were using was taro, which does technically grow out here, I've grown it out here, it doesn't thrive, but uh their traditional agricultural method was very analogous to the Wapado method that that was used out here for arrow, which if you've been by any wetlands in this area, you will see vast like uh that that have been allowed to uh cultivate, you'll see vast amounts of it, it is a very nutritious, very good food. It's actually a good starch in it as well, uh which so it does provide some protein. Um, it is a wetland crop, so I I was going through these uh these uh these these designations that were listed. Um, I was looking at the prime farmlands for Thurston County, and a lot of them are like, oh, this would be prime prime farmland if it was drained. And I pushed back on that because the reason that this area was able to support such a dense population was precisely because it was not drained. Um, and I would love again to see ways that we can encourage uh uh sustainable wetland agriculture, um because that is one of the main ways that we use to do it.
Pounder Commissioners Bartlett's point, we might be in a chatty period, but I feel like we can also have that after we adjourn the meeting.
I see the next on our agenda is a staff update.
The only thing I have is that we're looking forward to coming back next time and you know, discussion about the critical areas ordinance revisioning and talking to you all about uh some scoping.
Cool.
We have filled the vacancy for senior planner and current planning, we have a really strong candidate from DC coming. Um, and I think he's gonna be a really good asset to the current planning team and will support Andrew and his efforts of revisioning community development as a whole, so.
When is he gonna be here?
I think his start date's end of this month, um so quickly.
Yeah.
Relatively quickly for coming across the country.
I have a little bit of a question about our our staffing, um are you finding that uh you're getting a lot more applicants, is a lot of uh a lot of
Yes.
Agencies across the country are getting gutted?
Federal displacement is good for county hiring.
This was not a federal displacement though. Spouse got a really great job out here and so he's following her, but we have had um quite a few folks who are applying for positions they're arguably overqualified for, um because they've lost their job.
And anecdotally, I know a lot of folks from the Gulf Coast uh who have been moving up here and trying to get state jobs or county jobs. Uh, because this is now the only place that their kids can safely grow up or that they can safely exist. So we are already being a bit of a refuge state for that.
Did did you say you guys decided on what he's going to be, what position he's gonna be doing, what what's gonna be on his plate?
Uh, no, at least not, I've not been in those conversations, I think that it'll be close to what the like previous senior planner was, really supporting Abby, trying to help with the backlog. Um, I don't know the extent to which it's gonna look.
A more current planning.
That's my understanding.
Not hybrid. Alright.
Um, next calendar with agenda item. Our next scheduled meeting is September seventeenth, do we believe? Is any, is anyone uh aware that they would not be able to be here on September seventh?
I will be in Kansas City, we're in any IC meeting, so I may be joining us remotely or I might not be able to join us.
Anyone else? Looks like we'll have a quorum, and then the meeting after that, October first. Is anyone currently aware that they would not be able to join that meeting?
There's an extremely remote chance that I might be joining remotely, but I'll be there.
Okay. It's odd that I have another county thing on my calendar for that table.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, congratulations on being uncontested in your election. Um, you know anything or do you have any plans about does you, when you become uh sworn in as a port commissioner, will that change anything about your role with the?
Oh, yeah, I've talked to um County Commissioner Menzer about it and I um I'll be stepping down from the planning commission, um but we talked about timing and I have agreed to hold on as long as I can until I'm sworn in. Um, unless unless he asks me to do otherwise.
Awesome, thanks for letting us know. And can you?
Oh, just I'll I'll wait until right up until I get sworn in. Not, I I don't think that being a a port commissioner precludes me from serving, but I wouldn't want to do both. Um, and so I was, I'm I'm willing to stay here until I'm sworn in as port commissioner.
Great.
Um, unless, like I said, Commissioner Menzer has a reason to ask me to step down, then I mean I serve at the pleasure of the commissioner, so.
He didn't ask you to find a replacement for yourself?
No, although I think he's been uh talking to some folks. So.
You can't go till you find your own replacement.
No, he did not ask me to do that.
I vote that Commissioner um Bumbarger takes his place.
I second that.
We're not, it's not an official motion. I have a blocking concern.
Do we do that at the beginning of the year? Yeah, yeah, we'll do that right at the beginning or at the end of the year or the beginning of the year, one or the other.
Cause you would, you would vacate before the end of the chair term, so you would elevate to chair and if we It would become chair when he vacated. If you didn't uh expect to miss any, we wouldn't have to name a vice chair and just wait till February when we pick new leadership. It'd still be good to have at least an acting vice chair in case something Scott's still here. It's true. Be an acting vice chair. A lot of words.
Okay. Uh, anything for the good of the order? Okay, then um, having other business, I guess we adjourn.
Hey, a meeting that ends at eight twenty is a win.
Thank you.
Take the opportunity to use that thing.
Have a good night.